Good afternoon. This is a continued hearing on the Committee on, oh no, it's a whole new hearing, on the Committee on General Governmental Affairs and Cultural Affairs. And we have several items on the agenda. I know I promised that I would get certain people out here as soon as possible, so I'm going to start with the Bill 418 and get that testimony on. 418. The sign-up sheet. We have represented this from the judiciary. Are all of you going to testify? Let's keep it short.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Joshua Tenorio. I'm the acting administrator of the courts. With me is Sophia Diaz, my staff attorney, Barbara Perez, our human resources administrator. And as you know, we have two groups of law enforcement officers at the court. I have, to my left, John Lozama, the chief probation officer, and to my far right, Edward Tovis, the chief, the marshal of the court. As it currently stands, the marshal of the court is, or is designated, is the voting member on the post commission. And so I do believe that the peace officer and standards have gone, have extensively been reviewed, including with the participation of the judiciary. We come here supporting the submission by the executive branch. And I just wanted to advise, to let you know where we are. We have about 125 law enforcement personnel. Already, we have been reviewing the training records of all the employees to identify which employees would have gaps and who need to be, to complete the program within the recommended or the required timeline. We're working with the Guam Community College. We've, I wanted to point out that for at least two cycles that I've been in management at the judiciary, we've lent our training supervisor from the Marshals Division, Captain Joey Chulahi, to be the cadre for Bolea. And one of the reasons why we wanted to do that was to make sure that we embrace the kind of standards that we imagine the post commission will approve, but also to make sure that we would have the in-house expertise to, and a mechanism to offer the classes to our employees that, who need to, who have gaps in those, in the training requirements. So we have a process that we're undergoing right now. I'm confident that we'll be able to come up with a suitable business relationship with GCC in which we'll be able to adequately address every single one of our law enforcement officers and bring them up to standard. And that's at least for the education and training portion. For the physical fitness portion, we do support the physical fitness requirements. We note that there is a significant amount of time for the law enforcement officers to meet the requirement. And I think that we're going to be, we've decided to be aggressive in identifying internal resources to get, and to identify those officers that need to get in line and make sure that they all come out and pass by that point in time. But, so to summarize, we do come here supporting the adoption of these standards, and we're available for you if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Thank you for being here. This is so important. This is so important. And so, Josh, so how do you, how does the court, I know I see the pre-employment requirements, and you're going to make sure that the people you hire are physically fit and are psychologically fit, and so they pass that first standard and they enter your door. How do you continuously ensure that they are fit? I mean, in our world of education, we're supposed to be having annual evaluations, and then it's ongoing, and it's formative, and it's summative, and all of that. But in your world, the first responders and peace officers, if you can just very quickly tell me, how does that work?
I think that, right now, that's an evolving program. I think because the physical fitness mandate is going to require constant maintenance, or at least a certification for the officers, I think that the behavioral health side needs to be part of that. Right now, I have to admit that it has not, up until now, regular assessments on fitness for duty. They've only come up when there is an adverse action, maybe, that has presented itself for a situation that required some additional attention. And, you know, there have been some cases where we have referred law enforcement officers and other employees to get psychological evaluations as part of a fitness for duty. And so, right now, we were fortunate that, because of the work we do at the court, we have access to, you know, the providers, the on island providers, to go and be able to procure these kinds of services. But what we would do, we would refer them out. You know, when you do a psychological evaluation, there really should be, you know, there's some additional information that you need to submit so that the evaluator understands and is able to examine, you know, peculiar realities or certain events, maybe, that we're concerned about. But right now, it's based on an event. I'm open to taking a look at having periodic checks. It's not uncommon for there to be, especially in a traumatic event, you know, for there to be issues from time to time. But I think that's an area that still needs to evolve, and I think we're open to incorporating that into how we maintain, you know, the behavioral health of our employees as well.
And that's good to hear. And I presume that you do annual evaluation, performance evaluations-
Yes.
-on your employees. So, once you develop those performance standards, it could be tied into that. And so you present a perspective of the first responder, the peace officer, and their behavioral wellness. I'm also talking about the ability to know how to work with those of us with disabilities, those of us who have mental challenges. I've sat in your mental health court, and I've, you know, I took in that whole landscape. And I shared some observations with you, and I appreciated you being very open to hearing what I had to say. And so, you know, on page seven of this measure, it describes a variety of skill areas, but it doesn't have dealing with mentally challenged individuals. It does have dealing with physically challenged-
Right.
-individuals. And would you, and I'll be talking, of course, to GCC once the vice speaker brings them, the next group up, but would you be supportive of, you know, if that is what our peace officers of today have to know and be able to do and care about, would your branch be supportive of that?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm very happy to hear that, because it just makes a difference. And let me say for the record right now, as I live in this world, I have found that police officers, I have found that firefighters are incredibly good with us. We have had to access them, just last weekend, Eric and I had to go there, and they were just, just good. Just got a handle on it, didn't want to throw us in jail, and just read the landscape and then helped us. But not everybody does, and we're, we've just been lucky. And so for me, when I saw that vice speaker was introducing this, you know, of course there'd be more deliberation, but anywhere I can, I'm going to insert that anybody who's, who is put, the safety of our people is put in your hands, in your head, and your heart, you have to know how to deal with more of us who, we're all over the place now.
Sure.
And we, and we're not dying young. We're just living. And so, how do you deal with us? And it's not, it's not always easy, but it really isn't hard either. And so that whole attitude and that whole openness, but it's not there. It's, we're talking about physical challenges a lot, but we're not yet talking about mental challenges. And so I just want you to know that wherever I can, I will be taking advantage of my last session and inserting that wherever I can, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I think it's a good time for us as a workforce, you know, we're identifying some risk and needs assessment tools that we imagine our probation officers will be using for every single adult and juvenile defendant, or anybody that requires supervision in coming through the courts. And, you know, like, as for the juveniles, you know, I think the percentage of juveniles with behavioral health concerns is more than the, I think it's around 60 or 70 percent, they estimate, of the youth that come in through the court system have behavioral health concerns. So I think that we might have an additional benefit because the risk and needs assessment tools, including ones that will be focused on mental health and behavioral health needs, we're, we're spending the year, basically, employing through our probation officers. And I think part of that, you know, requires, you know, our collective workforce to be more educated and understanding how to deal with those of our residents that have those concerns.
Right. Those residents and their families.
Right.
Those their families come tight with them.
Correct, and the families.
And we're probably the more difficult of the package. But once you understand this, it becomes a little easier to deal with. And again, Josh, we talked about this maybe three years ago, when we had a group, a group community conversation. And we had talked about an identification system for those of us with mental health challenges. And I would, I had hoped that it would already be, you know, in place, but it's not. And I think that if we had a collaborative effort with all the first responders, I know the GPD has something, but it's not, it's not widespread, because I know I'm not, I know Rick's not on the database. But if we were able to get that for all of our people, all of our people, as young, as middle-aged, as, you know, manumco, and we know, you know, if you get a distress, they get a distress call from our address, they already know. And they will already know how to, you know, approach, right? And then, in times of emergency, the next time we have an 8.2 earthquake or whatever, then they will know. And, you know, Rick has grown, so when I die, then you guys have to take care of him. You already know. But that identification system is not there. And that will really help intervention and prevention issues. And so I know you allowed me the honor of being at your table about three weeks ago. You guys are looking at something. I just think, anytime you have that kind of relook, review, if you can plug that kind of in, who are our people, what do they need, and what kind of training does our law enforcement need to be as effective and efficient, that will go such a long way. So I hope that you-
Yeah, just, just quickly to add on to that, we're in, at least for the juveniles that have IEPs or behavioral plans at the Department of Education, our staff attorney's been meeting with theirs, trying to figure out ways to share the information so the school resource officers and the other probation officers that are interacting with those schools understand already who the students are that have been identified already, are receiving services, or they probably might not be receiving services, but they've already been identified.
And that's, and that's a very good point. Because some of us have been identified, but the school system struggles-
Right.
-with how to work-
There's not enough.
Oh, oh, and it's not, and, Mr. Vice Speaker, it is not an issue of money. It is not an issue of money. It's an issue of what do we do, and where's the leadership? So, you know, honestly, I think GPT, GFT, the peace officers have a better handle on it. And we grow up, so we go into the community. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker, and good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for appearing before the committee and providing testimony on this measure. You know, not too long ago, in this, earlier in this legislature, there was legislation that was introduced that would look and lean in the direction of establishing a fitness, physical fitness standard for all law enforcement. And based on previous discussions, there was a request that that particular legislation be held in abeyance until such time that the post comes out with their own proposals and regulations. And that's what we have before us. My concern, or my issue would be looking at the proposal. I know there's a three-year timeline for implementation in terms of applying standards and penalties and whatnot. One of the questions that I received repeated calls today on was, what will the implications be on compensation and employment of individuals within our law enforcement community should they not meet these requirements? I think it's very critical that our law enforcement, all-inclusive in the government of Guam, understand exactly what we're looking at, because it's a three-year timeframe. To acknowledge that there are new standards, to acknowledge that we have to comply as a government community of law enforcement, we have to comply with these standards, is ample time. But I believe that our law enforcement officers out there, albeit a lot of the calls that I received this morning, they want to understand, what would the impact be on their employment versus their compensation?
You know, we, in our internal meeting, we, that issue was discussed extensively. And if I'm, our read right now is that, you know, I use the example, we asked for funding for 50 marshals, as an example. Two of the marshals, let's say, do not meet the physical fitness requirement. I need 50 marshals. If they're, you know, we talked about if there are, if they're never going to pass, and there are other positions they qualify for, I would think that, you know, our personnel policy has a process in which it's competitive, you know, to fill vacancies. But the bottom line for me operationally is, you know, we need the number of law enforcement officers, in this case, the example marshals, I need the 50. And the implication is that if they don't meet the requirement within the three years and after the established process or the timeline they have to meet it, then, you know, we're looking, we would be looking at dismissing them through an adverse action procedure.
I think it's, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Vice Speaker, I think it's very important that that particular message also is imparted to our community out there. It's not just passing rules and regulations that establish fitness standards, but guess what? There are real implications in regards to your employability within the government of Guam. So we need everyone to understand within our law enforcement community what the impact would be, and obviously start working in that particular direction in terms of making sure that within a three-year timeframe, once it's effectively implemented across the board, that our people are ready and they're fit to continue to serve our community in the law enforcement capacity. So I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Right. And, you know, for us, and I would imagine the other agencies, we're going to be having orientation sessions with law enforcement officers that are affected. You know, there are some law enforcement officers, at least for the educational requirements that are grandfathered in. I think everybody after, employed after 1997 is the group that we would be combing through to make sure that they have taken, or we have records of their completion of all the classes that eventually would be post-approved. And then coming up with plans to, you know, good strategies, like I said, we're going to be working with GCC to implement for the academic side, but the PT side applies to all employees.
So, the grandfathering piece, even though the employees are grandfathered, I would think that the standards still have to be applied to every single employee-
Right.
-that is entrusted to take care of us.
That's true.
Okay.
Sure.
So you would find a mechanism to make sure they get the training, the support, to meet those particular standards?
Yeah, no, I think our view is that these standards, you know, are important. It signifies the public's, the public's confidence in the law enforcement officers. It's a very serious responsibility, and I think that the reason the post commission has come up with these proposals is, you know, keeping in mind that, you know, we have to maintain those assurances to the public, yeah?
I realize that our peace officers certainly, there's a lot more to the standards that they need to meet, aside from just the physical fitness aspect of it. But I couldn't help but, you know, as I was going through it, it just seems, well, first of all, if we go to page four, one of the requirements is that all applicants for category one and two positions must provide medical certification, that they can pass the physical fitness. And I think probably what we meant there was that they can undergo the physical fitness. Now whether they, when they actually, actually take the test, whether they pass it or not, it's another one. But I guess what we mean is that they can actually undergo it, that he doesn't have this high blood pressure and is going to bust a blood vessel or something like that. Then the other requirement is that he has to have a certificate as to the absence of mental or emotional conditions that would adversely affect. Now, I guess maybe I don't understand completely, but this is the pre-employment requirements. So somebody coming off the streets, and I guess I have to provide all these certifications, how many people can afford, you know, to go to a psychology clinic and go see a psychologist or whoever to certify that I'm all there, that my elevator goes all the way up? So it seems that we're putting requirements on, that maybe the guy out there who's unemployed right now probably doesn't have this kind of discretionary funds available to be going and getting this certification from my psychologist, going to a doctor, you know. So I'm just kind of concerned that we're putting those requirements, and only the guys that can afford these things will be able to get to the front door. Everybody else kind of, you know, has to figure out a means. We go to page six, and we talk about basically the, again, it goes to the physical fitness thing. They take the physical fitness exam, the test, they flunk it, they got, so they get their first onset, and then they have 90 days to retest, and then they take it and they flunk it again, and then they have another 90 days to retest. They take it again, they flunk it again. 270 days goes by, nine months, and an individual still cannot pass the physical fitness test. It seems that the bar is so low that if he can't even step over it, what makes us think that, you know, so it just, I just find it a little, I guess, concerning that the standard probably really should be a little higher. I mean, I would expect that from our peace officers, and I look around to a lot of our peace officers, and, you know, let's face it, gosh, if he can't get himself in shape in 90 days, okay, fine, so you take it again, and if after that second retry, come back in 30 days, or, but to let him go for 90 days. And then, according to this, then, again, on page six, paragraph F, on failure. So what happens then? He flunks it four times. That's a year. He takes the, he takes the test four times in one year, and he still cannot pass it. I have no reason to believe that he's going to pass it on the fifth year, on the fifth time. But what do we do? We have, we then, we, according to this standard, peace officer receives four unsatisfactory results within a 24-month period, and we assign him to an administrative position. Where's the, where's the incentive to really excel, at least, you know? So, heck, maybe I don't like going out there chasing after bad guys, or, you know, getting punched by a bad guy, so I'll flunk the test four times, and I'm going to go get assigned to a desk job. And on top of that, a peace officer who fails to meet the PFQT fitness standards after full mandatory implementation shall be eligible for intra-departmental and inter-departmental transfer. So it just, they're just, you know, I mean, okay, so I can't pass the test, I'm not going to worry about it. I'll get transferred to, you know, a desk job. And a desk job can be just as demanding, I think. So I'm just concerned that the bar that is being set by this here, and now that this has caught my eye, I definitely will take the time to take a look at it. But it just, it just seems that we're, you know, that bar really could be set just a little higher. So that's, that's my initial take on this in a quick read. I probably, I will go back and take a look at it closer.
You know, Senator, my view is that this obviously was, you know, when you get, the commission has elements from every law enforcement entity on island. So our view really is, whatever is the standard, we will meet it. We have had internal discussions about meeting that standard or having a higher standard. And, you know, those are things that we've looked at. But really, you know, like I said, this is a negotiated joint effort that was pushed out by the collective body, and, you know, our testimony is that we'll definitely meet the standard that is adopted, whatever that may be. And, you know, there are folks in the judiciary that have similar concerns or similar views as you. And, you know, we've had some conversations about whether or not we have statutory authority or what do we need to do within our own personal rules to see if we're going to have a higher standard. But in the spirit of one government and trying to be consistent with the executive branch, we come to, today to support what has been submitted.
I understand. And I guess the bottom line is that our, the peace officer corps, so to speak, from either the judiciary or the executive branch, is, the bottom line is that there are a paramilitary organization. And there's certain expectations and certain standards that are expected of such an organization. And I just, I really don't quite see it here. Thank you.
I probably made a mistake of calling them up first. I think what we should do, I'll excuse this panel. Can I have the members of the post commission that are here? And you can stay, since you were, you were on, right?
Ed.
Ed.
Before, Mr. Chairman, before I leave, I just want to say that one of the things that I'm hopeful the other post commission members will do is, we're going to seek and ask their support if we could have a seat for the probation officers and a seat for the marshals. If they agree, then we would ask for the law to be amended. It's nothing we've discussed yet with them, but just to let everybody know, that's something that I'd like to see if they would consider.
Okay. So can I have the members of the post commission? Mr. Santa Tomas, Scamacho, Chief, who all sits on it. I unfortunately don't have the names.
Mr. Chair, the Vice Chair.
Okay.
Wow.
My name is Dennis Santa Tomas. I'm the executive director for the Post Commission, Peace Officer Standards and Training. And with me, I have the chair, Airport Police Chief, Bob Scamacho, the vice chair, Customs Major, Vince Perez. We also have, as part of the membership, we have the customs director, Pedro Leon Guero. We have the fire chief, Joey San Nicholas, the police chief, Fred Berdalio, and corrections director here, Joe San Augustine. So again, these are the main members, the primary members of the post commission. This body is basically open to anyone, the general public, so oftentimes we have other folks. So I'll let, I'll let the chair here open and make some opening remarks.
Thank you very much for-
I'm sorry. Thank you very much for this opportunity to talk about our peace officer standards and training. And I hope to answer some of those questions that Senator Hada has brought about, but just as a general briefing. We've been working on this for about three years already, and we've had input from all the different law enforcement agencies, and quite a lot of debate, a lot of arguments, and a lot of, you know, back and forth issues regarding the standard and training of education and OJT and all these other areas. We also had GCC in- We also had GCC involved and we talked about the academic standards. We had DOA also as part of the committee discussions and looking at all the different areas that may involve civil service. So this is really a monumental thing because it's been a long time coming and we've been all talking about it for quite some time and finally we've gotten together and put our heads together to come up with some kind of basic document. This of course is going to be something that possibly will have some issues that need to be corrected. It's going to be almost like a living document and there's going to be changes along the way, I would think, as we go through the growing pains of getting this program implemented. But I am very confident of what we've done. We've also did some research with other states, Arizona, Colorado, New York and California and just looking at what other agencies have implemented. And so, and also in the fact, but we got all the experience from the trainers from all the different agencies to get involved. What is it that they were looking for? What are some of the problems? What are the internal affairs issues that we keep coming back? Or even the AG had some issue, you know, input where how were they happy with the reports? Did we have to have more influence, more training in police report writing? All these issues. We did our research, we got a lot of input, discussed it thoroughly. The whole thing is that we wanted to have a one standard for all the peace officers here, whether you be at airport police, GPD and port police, what have you, all these category one and two especially. And so that when a police officer goes through a training or police officer training goes through the cycle, we say, hey, this guy's qualified to go almost any other agency because he has the basic, just like in the military, you've got basic training, every soldier knows the common skills. So that's what we were focusing on. The other thing the post commission does is it gives us some more accountable for what the peace officer does. So if a police officer messes up or out in the field, we go back and say, well, did he get the training? And then say, well, according to this certificate, according to the syllabus that he did receive the training. So it helps us to understand where are all the problems that we've been experiencing throughout the years. The area we have that has so been controversial or a lot of debate upon is of course the fitness program and as Senator Ada had mentioned, that, you know, three years is a long time and then 270 and there was, it was all mixed. For me, I thought one year was enough to get everybody together. I didn't want to wait three years and some said, well, two years, some said four years, some said five. So we came up with a three-year implementation, said, you know, come to a compromise and say, let's work on this and say, just so that there will be no excuses. Now, the question was whether or not 270 days was too much because in actuality, if you count the three years plus the 270 and then the fourth level, that's almost four years to get ready to be, and it is long, but we also discussed it with DOA and says, well, what would be some of the issues with the civil service? Did we give progressive counseling? Did we give them ample time? And in the end, we said, okay, by this time, there will be no, if we had to transfer this guy out or he had to be assigned to a different position, there will be no excuses because he had more than ample time, he was given counseling on every single level where he failed. And it, does the, does the agency have to give him, that person, a job after that? That would be under debate because it has, first they have to have a position that is open and the civil service would have to be involved in. So that one, I'm not too clear on whether or not that would happen, whether it would be permanently terminated because there is no transfer, let's say, you know, there's no position for clerical work because that's not, he has no experience, he has no educational training or what have you, so we can't just give him a clerical job. So there might be some, you know, areas that we need to look at even further on that area. But yeah, I think, yes, sir, I think to me, it's more than enough time and if I had to decide on my own, I would have had it a bit shorter and, but at the same time, when I talked, we talked with all the other agencies and ramifications of civil service and hiring attorneys because, you know, they contested or they put everything on appeal, we thought that this was the best option and whether or not that is the best option is a subject to debate. What the fitness program is, and I, you know, to just give you an overall view is that it helps, it helped to improve the services. If the officer is healthy mentally, physically, he's going to respond more effectively and he's not going to be frustrated, tired and all that because of physical illness. There'll be less sick leave. We spend thousands upon thousands of dollars on sick leave compensation throughout the year in all the agencies and we know that. The overtime costs because of people absent and everybody knows from every single agency that it results in millions of dollars when we talk about overtime costs because people are sick and so forth. Less accidents, officers are, you know, not going to be crashing the car because they're too tired or less physical abilities and even responding to a physical altercation if the officer's not able to respond physically, that's going to cost the government, you know, again, because he's on sick leave or workman's comp. The overall view of the post commission and what we're trying to prove here is really the whole gamut of it is homeland security and for every agency going to one standard, we can say, you know, we're fairly confident, we are fairly confident that this will improve our whole homeland security issues and all our officers and peace officers can respond effectively in case of an emergency. We all have the same type of training, we can have mutual support and, you know, this is a great opportunity for all of us to get, finally get into one program that shows that we have one standard and one mission of public safety. So that's my overall presentation, sir.
Hold on a second. Senator Tom wants to ask a question.
I think Chief Comacho, you, you know, you did an excellent job of explaining really the importance of physical fitness. I mean, the physical fitness aspect of it is just more than just, you know, a lean, mean, muscle, you know, peace officer who can run after the bad guys and all that. There's a lot more to it. There's the mental discipline and everything else, really just the sick leave issue and all that. And so, so, you know, I don't think that the standard should be just about, you know, the physical fitness, but, but, but physical fitness does tie in a lot of things. And I just, after you guys came up to the table, I know each and every one of you, with the exception of the customs major here, I don't know what your background is, but I look at this and I look at this panel and I said, you guys put this together because I wouldn't have expected this from a panel such as yourself, that you would actually have settled for, for something like this. Now, I recognize that, you know, there's the considerations about, well, what will civil service say? Quite frankly, and all of you have learned this in the military, is do something and then develop the situation from there. And if in fact the guy cannot pass the test within, you know, he's got three years to get up to speed and if he still cannot pass it by that fourth year, then, a good example is, I guess with GPD. If your police officer got arrested for family violence, doesn't he lose his weapon? You take away his weapon?
That's correct, Senator.
And so what happens when you take away his weapon? Can he still be considered a police officer with GPD?
If he's convicted of family violence, he loses his law enforcement career, all, everything, and he can be dismissed from the department for that.
Okay, so, so it seems that in the case of GPD, I mean, they went and they said, here's a standard, it's either adhere to or you're out. So just concerned about, well, you know, what about the lawyers, this and that? Do it and let's find out. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just go by seniority and we'll go this way. The vice chair? Well, he's the vice chair.
Yeah. Good afternoon, senators. My name is Vince Perez. I am the assistant chief of Guam Customs. I am also the vice chair for the post commission. Everything that was said earlier by Chief Comacho is true. One of the things that maybe wasn't brought up was the fact that we're basing this entire program on an air force instruction that had science and data and research and a lot of the aspects, like the 90 days, are things that were found in the air force instruction. So what it is, is when you take a look at the actual instruction itself, it's based on your age and then after 18 to like 21-year-olds will do X amount and then it goes on a progressively sliding scale downward. So as you get older, you do less. So it is based on, it is kind of based on the military model of fitness and my background is I've got 16 years in the Air National Guard, so I understand what fitness requirements are and I've also participated many times and I agree and I concur with the body that this is something that is needed and will there be stumbling blocks? Possibly, but we will go over that and correct them as we go along. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, go ahead.
Okay, chief, my name is Chief Fred Berdallio. Again, good afternoon, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Tina Munya Barnes, Senator Tom Anna, Senator Eileen Yamashita, Senator Frank Junior, Uggan Junior. First of all, you know, Chief Bob Comacho is correct. I think even, you know, Josh Tenorio is also correct about the process of how the commission member met. We've had actually even the executive director, when we had some meetings with the post commission, we invited public input for any, anyone who could come down to the post commission meetings to have input into the overall post commission administrative rules to include the physical fitness. You make a great compelling argument there, Senator Ada, in terms of looking at the philosophy of what's going to happen, you know, isn't it too liberal in terms of if the individual isn't going to be passing, why do we extend them, you know, that ability to still stay employed and switch to another administrative job? You know, there's some in the panel like Chief Bob said, it shouldn't be, you know, make it one year, there's some says, how about six months? How about, you know, no, zero tolerance at all? And I know that during that time when we had a lot of, on the post commission meetings, when we opened it up for input and officers came over, I mean, the officers now in every law enforcement agency from Department of Corrections to GPD to all the different law enforcement agencies, the challenges that they have. We just came from that lecture up there at the hotel with, you know, the problem of diabetes and obesity and it's a big challenge in Guam. We've lost several of our officers in the department. I think as a post commission, we're looking, we were looking at addressing within the administrative rules besides standards and training to look at the physical aspect of it and looking at our own departments to implement some policy that would be aligned with this, to start this, like what the question was asked, annual physical fitness evaluations, get a training program, a health and wellness program going among each agency so we get everyone, the message is given to the troops to know that law enforcement community in Guam is changing and looking at physical fitness seriously. And in the beginning, this is a starting point, but I just believe confidently, you know, with, with the input that's here and with the input you provided also Senator Ada, that there could be always potentials to, to up the bar, as you said, when it comes down to challenging our troops and letting them know that this is for the benefit of them because overall the end goal is to look at them being able to function as a law enforcement officer, not setting them up for failure and at the same time, really being confident that it's not standards that we don't believe they can meet, especially when we have generations and young generations of our youth all looking at law enforcement as a career on this island. Thank you.
Thank you very much and I don't want to preempt Senator Yamashita, but I really want us to not only talk about the physical fitness, but I really do believe that as Senator Ada asked earlier, there, though it may cost money to get a psychological evaluation, it behooves all of us to make sure that those of you that have a badge and a gun are, have been tested and shown that you can and should be trusted with a gun as opposed to someone with some issues that shouldn't have a gun and we need to make sure that that's in this. And I know besides all of you being tested and being found to be capable of having the responsibility of a gun and a badge, that I joined Senator Yamashita in hoping that, or hoping that none of you will object to an amendment to these rules that will require that there be some training and extensive training, because I know she's not happy with the training that we've had so far, but extensive training to make sure that those of you with guns and badges know how to deal with individuals in the community who have various issues that you all should be sensitive to and sensitive to handling. Okay? Chief San Nicholas? Go ahead, yeah.
I know that if a recruit goes through the GCC training, there is a part of the law that provides for compensation for that. When he gets hired from the agency, the agency can pay for that, whatever training you have for the, for the criminal justice academy and maybe that's a consideration that if the person does get hired, maybe that compensation for the psychological testing, whether you pay $150 or $300, can be recompensated to the individual once he gets hired.
Well, I think it should even go further back than that without divulging or exposing confidences.
Right.
I was called about an issue about a person who was in the GCC program, who had been at the UOG ROTC program and was released, relieved because of some issues with guns and when they did further research, that person had had a, had been tossed out of one of the schools for coming to school with a weapon. And so I think the evaluation has to be before, and I think I spoke to you, Dennis, about it, that, you know, it's not an issue of getting their tuition money. It's, it's wrong to accept their tuition money if you know that they're, you know, to sign it for Balaia, if you know that they're not going to be able to use the Balaia training because they have convictions that will never make them be employable. It really is unconscionable that we have them go through a whole program and then they come out of it and because they have some, you know, maybe it's a sexual assault and they'll never be able to have, but we're getting the tuition and we should be more conscious about those kinds of things before we do anything. Anyway, okay, sir.
Mr. Chairman and members of this legislature, I'm happy to be here in front of you. Just to, instead of reading my written testimony which I submitted, I'll just go ahead and kind of touch on some things. Yes, this was a collaboration over many years, three years to say, of getting this final product and I do agree a lot with all the points that were shared, but let me just try to hit some points. As far as the psychological aspect, at least, and I know they do it in all the agencies, at the, at the point of hiring or during the hiring process, at least in the Guam Fire Department, we do a very extensive background investigation on every single applicant that is coming, that comes up for an interview before they even interview with us. This includes a deeper investigation into their court and police clearance as well as their educational background and any other red flags that might be thrown up. Once they're hired and they're in our, in our Once they're hired and they're in our, in our fire cycle, it's basically a form of basic training where we break them down and build them back up. And usually during those times of stress, you would normally see the red flags pop up for those that might not be psychologically fit to, in the case of law enforcement, to carry a weapon. In our case, to be able to respond to chaos. So I believe that, at least for the fireside, while I do agree that there's no issue with you including or amending into these rules to require a psychological, actual true testing, I believe it's also addressed in the system that we already have in place. As far as the training and dealing with special needs or anything else of that matter, that is also addressed in our, in our training curriculum in the fire cycle. As Senator Yamashita has mentioned more than once, firefighters and EMTs go through extensive training on how to deal with individuals in those cases and many other cases for that matter. Physical fitness test now, if I can point out on page 13, subsection 3013 as well as 3014, now the physical fitness standard, and I brought this up in many of our meetings here, the timeline, the three-year timeline that I understand it is more of a transitional phase. And if you look at the next section, it does allow for the commission to make revisions and changes. So we have to remember that we're bringing physical fitness standards to law enforcement agencies and fire service that has never been in place. And so, yes, we do have individuals that might fall out of, that might require more than 90 days to meet this minimum standard, the Air Force standard. And we need to allow for that to pass the test of a grievance going to civil service. You know, I was hired to do this job. There was never a physical fitness requirement when I was first hired. And why are you placing this on me? So to kind of address that, I think the timeline that was introduced is actually pretty standard across board to include the military when they do transitions, when they're introducing a new program. I'll point you to the Marines who've changed from going through a traditional run, push-up and sit-up examination to a more functional examination. They did a three to five-year transition, depending on the rank. They started at the boot camp for any new buddy, any new people that came in, they applied the standard right away. But for those that already had tenure or had a time in service, they allowed for a transition. And then once they met the standard, then they dropped it. Instead of three years, now it becomes every time you fail, you have to retake the test in 90 days, like he was saying. So I think if, what's important here is, like you said, we set the standard, which are these rules, which is a product of this, of this commission, and then allow for the situation to develop, and we can always revise later to meet your concerns. In our case, in the fire service, I agree that the Air Force exam is a minimal standard. And for me, we have our program that we're implementing, and I was actually just waiting on this to really solidify so that we can further enhance our requirements. We've created a program called the Fireground Work Performance Evaluation Program, which requires a firefighter, even if they do pass this standard, they have to take a fireground work performance examination, which basically says, we put them through a ten-event exercise or evolution, and they have to be able to, and it's basically things that you would do on a fire ground. It's specifically laid out in their job description, be able to raise a ladder, pull a hose, carry equipment. And that's what this examination is all about. Because oftentimes, we do get doctors who say that so-and-so is fit for duty, and then they come to us and they ask for a light duty assignment. So, you know, I've invited Dr. Kimoto and Dr. Wen specifically to come and see it because they brought the concern to me, you know, what does fit for duty really mean? And so when we did this examination, they absolutely agreed to it. And I presented that to this commission, and I forget what section it is, it does allow for each agency to specifically require further testing if they identify to be needed. So, but all in all, I absolutely support this, these rules and these standards. And just wanted to point out that there is room to evolve or improve this document as we move on. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Did you want to add anything, Dave?
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman and members of the senators from 32nd Guam Legislature. Since, first of all, I do, my name is Pedro Leon Guerrero. I am the Director of Guam Customs Quarantine. I do agree with everything that's been said so far. So to kind of shorten, I'm just going to read my prepared statement of support. Guam Customs Quarantine Agency recognized the evident disparity when it comes to the types of standards and training within the different law enforcement agencies in the government of Guam. The agency also notes the time off taken by officers because of health-related issues. Guam Customs also recognized that the Post Commission has come a long way to create standards and training for all law enforcement officers in the Post Commission Administrative Rules draft. Guam Customs hereby supports the efforts of the Post Commission to develop administrative rules, which will finally create a structured approach towards the standardized, standards in training for the different law enforcement entities within the government of Guam. Our officers can only benefit from the application of these rules, ensuring only qualified peace officers are hired, and that they remain physically fit, ensuring a healthier and prolonged lifestyle, and that they are fully capable of keeping our island community protected. I will say, Senator, Mr. Chairman, that being part of the meetings that we've had, and again, there was a lot of give and take, there certainly was a lot of opinions on where to go. We want to train like, you know, like Marines versus Air Force versus Army, it's all there. But I believe that we are taking an important first step. We can certainly have room to mold and make it, tailor it better as we go along. But I think it's more important to seize the opportunity to establish some rules, and then we can go from there to improve it. I hope we can do that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Director.
Mr. Chair, Senators, good afternoon, if I may. Likewise, the Director from Customs, I do agree with everything that was brought forth this afternoon. Senator Ada, well heard, sir, and I thank you very much. With that said, I would like to just go ahead and read my written statement this afternoon. Buenos, Zanafa Day, Honorable Chair and Senators. Sisus Maasi, for the opportunity to express the Department of Corrections' support for the Guam Peace Officer Standard Training, it is with great pleasure to write this letter of support. By the hard work provided by various law enforcement agencies, this program will best benefit the entire public safety and the people of Guam. This is an important component of all law enforcement officers. The Guam Post Commission offering are a demonstration of overall commitment for all law enforcement officers. This will benefit the uniformed personnel at the Department of Corrections in providing good health and relief from stress and tension that some of our officers go through due to the working environment that they endure daily. It will also boost up the morale here at the department with the help on building a physically fit and healthy workforce, and will fully be capable of keeping the island residents safe and secure. The Department of Corrections look forward to working with the Guam Peace Officer and Standard Training in the upcoming years. Sisus Maasi. I just want to, and yes, we going back and forth, and of course, y'all know I'm a Marine. The mission is different. The Marines' mission, locate, close with, and destroy the enemy. Peace officers, we're here to provide peace within the public. If it was my standards, which I know would, if I would have brought it up, would be opposed. 30 days and they're out. And would that be really be fair? We want to consider and make sure that they are physically fit, they are trained academically ready to go, and just not focus on physical, but also their administrative part, knowledge as well. It'd be very unfair to really not put the commission here on a trial and then adjust some of the language or process that was identified by the members here, and be able to make it a more so realistic, instead of, yeah, within 30 days, they don't pass, take them out. I think the four, three or four failure is reasonable, but the only way we can really prove that is by putting the program to a test. So that's all I have to share with you all this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marshall?
He's the executive director. You guys are all.
Okay. I was going to say, I guess, save the best for last, right? Okay, good afternoon, Vice Speaker, the rest of the senators. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here before you today to testify on behalf of the post rules, or the rules that we have proposed. This post program's been, gosh, brought up many, many years ago, and I feel that it's finally moving. I want to base myself not just in, not just because of the military experience in the Guam Marine Guard for, what, 20, 20, almost 29 years. I want to base my experience with work-related issues and how important fitness is, whether it be the standards being in question. But it's very important to be fit because try, and I'm sure a lot of people in this room tried running, chasing a suspect, and when you finally reach the suspect, then he's not going to be giving up in a gentle manner. Everyone in this room wants to have a responding police officer physically fit and being there for our loved ones in the event we need their services. And every peace officer here wants to ensure that their partner is physically fit because everyone knows that a fight is only going to take a few seconds, probably even four to seven seconds. And we want our partner who's responding to make sure that they're fit. We're certainly open to changes as far as even improving the mental portion as well. We're certainly open to changes with the physical fitness. Everyone testified that we went back and forth. If I had it my way, I'd probably want it in a few months as well, because I'm former Army as well, Senator, so. But the whole idea is, at least this thing is getting started. We all need it. We need to make sure that everyone is physically fit in the law enforcement category, and as well as mentally. The mental part, we probably need to improve, go back maybe. But it doesn't deal with, well, it can cover a large area as far as mental situation is concerned. I mean, if we have an officer who displays, for example, forgetting his weapon in the work area, that could be another issue. You know, you forget your weapon once, you forget it twice, and there's probably something wrong with you mentally. So that's a real tough area to look at, and I'm sure that we need to improve that area too. Thank you.
Dennis, thank you.
Okay, Vice Speaker and senators, again, I'm very proud to have worked with the whole team here for the last couple of years, and it's a lot of work, it's a lot of cooperation. I think it's the first time we pulled as many people in the room for this long of a period and worked really, it was really an intra-agency effort. And, you know, on Guam, like Chief Bob Camacho said, we have a lot of health challenges in our community. So our law enforcement community, our peace officer community is not, you know, they're not excused from that, they're really part of this overall gigantic problem we have in the island with health and fitness. So I think it's a good thing that the leaders, the leaders of these respective agencies are, were personally involved in this developmental process of these rules. It shows that they have concern, they have sincerity for their officers. But it's a two-step process. We can only, we can only develop these things, but we're going to need their, we're going to need their full effort to make it all work. So, but so it's really the first step, and like many of them on the table here have said, it's, we're only doing the first step. This is version 1.0, there'll be a version 2.0 and 3.0 and so forth. So it's a living document that continues to build. I agree with what was said about psychological eval, we can find a solution for that. We've really focused on the baseline peace officer with this set of rules, but we've already, we already have discussion and meetings in the works for developing further standards for officers as they progress in their career, as they become supervisors, as they become managers, as they become chiefs or fire battalion chiefs or whatever, whatever position they rise to, that is also in the works. Granted, it's not in this 1.0 version, but in subsequent versions that will be, that is, that is the intent of the commission to develop the standards for the different levels as an officer moves up in his or her career. So again, I agree with everybody. We support this wholeheartedly. We realize that it's subject to change and improvement, but we ask for the, for your full support in at least allowing the commission to put something out there that we can start putting to work. And then from there on, it can always be improved and get better and better. Chief Camacho, do some final remarks.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to include, I think it would be remiss if I don't mention that, as we looked at who are peace officers as identified by statute, you know, there are some positions in throughout the government of Guam that do have security missions, such as the port guards, airport guards, corrections guards, that are not including the peace officer categories, because it's not described there as peace officers. So I was wondering if we, agencies can submit the list of those positions so that maybe can be introduced later on, or even, I'm not sure if it's possible to introduce it in here, that we can include them as part of the peace officer, you know, identification? Because these port guards and airport guards and corrections guards, they do the same type of, you know, security measures and do need the required training. As of this time, they will not be required because they're not identified as peace officers and even revenue and tax agents are not identified. So we'd like to ask if we can submit that as far as an amendment or an inclusion into the law, if not, maybe some subsequent bill.
Let's make it a subsequent piece because there's going to be quite a bit of discussion between whether or not the revenue agents are going to have the same requirements that, or the...
All right. Sure. I just wanted to mention that.
But I understand. I know even, even the, we got a message from the mayors that they were wondering whether or not they had to comply.
Okay. Get on the ground.
Senator Yamashita has a question.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Thank you for all of the work, and I agree, it's a good starting point. And so now, Colonel, this is the question. As you have been pulling everyone together and collaborating and you're, you know, you're looking forward, do we already have rubrics for the different, for the report writing, the criminal justice overview, the first responder, the officer survival and use of force, firearms and safety and so forth and so on? Is there already, you know, a developmental, you know, growth of what you know your beginning officers and then your next group, and then your next group, and how you see that grow? Or is that a work in progress? Because that's, you know, when you talk about your training records, my best guess is that your training records is going to be based on what we expect our officers to know and be able to do as they, as they grow and experience and as they continue in this world of work. And so am I thinking, am I correct in thinking that that is a next step in, because I hear everybody saying that we've been working on it for three years, we're at a good place, this is a good starting point, and we need to move forward. And so as we are going to move forward, is that something that we're looking at? That we'll have these indicators spelled out about what it would look like? The beginning, more experienced and the mature officer, you know?
Yeah, with regard to these, the respective skill sets that you're mentioning here, we, University of Guam and GCC are both also members of the, granted, they're non-voting, but they're also members of the Post Commission, so I work closely with them. A lot of what we see here and what we have listed here is already in the CJ curriculum for, to get CJ certification. You have to take officer survival, you have to take weapons call and so forth. Some of the new ones that we did, that we did add in, which will have to be added to both UOG and GCC curriculum, is cultural awareness and sensitivity, dealing with physically challenged individuals, which noted we should also include mentally challenged, as you recommend. recommended. The Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Act, that was also added in by the commission. Active shooter, which is, you know, very important to all of us these days. So aside from the standard stuff that were listed upfront, those ones that I just read off were, were things that the commission recommended be added into the curriculum of both GCC and UOG to their respective programs.
But Colonel, then are we then saying that all peace officers essentially are enrolled in the GCC slash UOG programs? Because, or is it going to be that we see us developing a whole professional development program so that as you go on, that all the directors and chiefs will say to these officers, okay, by this year, this is what you're going to be able to know and be able to do, and you're going to be evaluated on this, and we will help you. We'll get you the training, we'll give you the support, but this is what you need to be able to do. I think the physical fitness thing, while some of us on our island, we have a hard time with our weight and all of that, that I think we can get a handle on. Sometimes I think that behavioral wellness issues are harder because a lot of us don't want to deal with it. And it's really simply just act the way I want you to act or else get out. And it doesn't happen like that anymore. So I, am I correct in thinking that this whole professional growth program is going to be a piece that will come? And we will provide that to everybody in the different, different branches? And then we continuously support all of the officers in being competent in the different areas? And, you know, I know, in one minute, and so, and I don't know if anyone shared you, Lend, that's out of the University of Guam Cedars program, they did a study, General Orders 12-03. Have you seen that study? Okay, I will share it with you. I'll forward it to you hopefully by tomorrow. What they did was they talked to all of your recruits, and everybody was sort of familiar with General Orders 12-03, which I'm very happy is in existence, but what the officers were not able to do was really talk it out. They knew that some of us have behavioral wellness issues, they knew that some of us were different, they knew that there were different strategies, they knew you had to work, they knew that, but they didn't know how to. And they were, you know, and the Lend students under Carla Torres's, you know, teaching, and you know, we all know Carla, right, has now a document. And I really would like you to see that because I really believe your hearts are in the right place. The intelligence I get is there. You guys know what you're doing. You are Marines, you are Army, I get it all, right? But now I'm talking about 10% of us. That's what I'm talking about. And, and you know what, Colonel, it's the 10% of us that are going to give you guys heck. You already saw it, we already saw it. We already saw it in February. And it's going to happen again and again. And that's what we got, need to get a handle on. So I'll send you the Lend, and then, you know, maybe you and I can have another conversation offline before we go into session on this, but, but I also hear you saying you're agreeing to dealing with mentally challenged, that whole in-service piece?
Yes, Senator.
And then if we just have that professional development program, that would give me a sense of relief, that that is in the horizon, that the curriculum is there, but even if you don't go to the GCC UOG program, that the chiefs are going to require that this is what you need to be, this is your professional development plan. And in this year and this year, this is what you're going to be able to know and be able to do and care about, right? And if you don't, and I'll tell you what, three months, six months, nine months, that's way too much time for us. It only takes us one instant to get, to spiral, right? So, I know, I'm singing to the choir, but it's on the record and it's very important to me, so I thank you, I thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Just one follow-up, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. One follow-up inquiry because I'm looking at all of the language here in terms of the penalties, in terms of taking the test should someone not be successful the first go-around. Now, is there an additional component to this, which is the chart, which specifies, I know Major Perez alluded to that, but obviously that's very critical so that in fact, it's officially adopted as part of these rules and regulations and that every law enforcement officer would understand what the minimum requirements would be to be able to be recertified. So that chart, if you can provide that, please to the chairman, would be very, very critical in terms of ensuring that every, like I said, every single law enforcement understands, if you're at the age of 18, guess what, you're going to have to meet the maximum standards according to the chart. If you're at the age of 35-plus or 45-plus, then it's a little bit more lenient, taking into consideration not only your gender, but also your age category. So that really has to be presented to the chairman, so I'm just going to put out that request.
So those charts were in fact included in submission?
It was?
Yes. Maybe not with that packet, but it was in the overall submission packet that went in.
Then I apologize, and we'll go back and research it so that in fact, that's part of what all the senators understand is being adopted.
Right.
Okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just a closing comment. First of all, I want to say I have confidence in this panel. So, so the fact that you've emphasized that this is your starting point, this is, you know, and then you're going to come back, it's a living document, it's going to be revisited, certainly gives me a lot of encouragement. And in fact, I noticed there's a section 3014 here and it says, "Subject to revision", and it should be subject to change as determined by the Post Commission. And I'm just wondering that, you know, maybe I would, certainly would be inclined to put a, an amendment in the bill that really would require that the commission will have to, maybe every three years, issue a certificate that yes, we have reviewed this, the bar where it is, it is, is fine, we don't need to add or subtract anything, but there will be that mandate that you have to come back and revisit it. Otherwise, it's one of those, you know, set it and forget it. And, and so I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I think my only comment was on the reciprocity part and just making sure, because it allows for the reciprocity to kick in from our other jurisdictions, but that they also must do the certified training course here on Guam, and how long is that? If there's an equivalent done for a whole program and they're certified and completed all the prerequisites right there, they still have to go to the one here on Guam?
No, ma'am. Well, we look at their, their subject matter and like, let's say they don't have active shooter on that thing, we would say, hey, you have to take this active shooter. And it can be done in-house and we can certify the, the instructors for each of the agencies are going to be certified by the Post Commission. So as long as there's a certified instructor and he goes through that thing, then that will be acceptable. Or there's something that might be similar. Like, let's say they went through mouth training, you know, urban terrain, training, which is similar to active shooter, then...
Then that will be accepted.
That will be acceptable.
Okay, and then all the other, and the other thing that's come to mind is like, picking sure that all the officers or others, like, because one that's come to mind was the support from Homeland Security, and I don't know if there was any officers that were stationed there and all that, so would that be included? I just food for thought, so.
That I guess will be in that legislation. If that would be a consideration, then we will have to put that into...
Yeah, and I, he was here and I don't see him now, I was going to ask him that question and what his thoughts are. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your three-year effort.
Bravo, bravo.
All right, excuse. Was there anybody else who wanted to be heard on this? If not, Bill 418 is deemed heard. April, are you still here? Let's, poor thing is by herself. The appointment of April Flores to the KGTF PBS Board of Trustees.
Hey. Can I have just a minute, just a little? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, April. Why don't we go ahead? Please.
Hi, Hafaday, honorable senators. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and to present myself as an applicant for the KGTF and PBS Board. I believe I would make a great addition to the PBS Board because the PBS channel has been an integral part of my childhood. I moved here to Guam from the Philippines when I was three years old, and the only language I spoke was Tagalog. But I was able to learn English by watching educational TV shows like Sesame Street, you know, reading Rainbow, and even Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood. And I remember my first experience going into a TV studio was in middle school when I went to PBS for an academic challenge bowl match. So I would love the opportunity to give back to our island and through service and through, and to continue PBS's mission to educate, inform, and inspire. If you review my resume, you'll see that my experience in product development and telecommunications has helped hone to my skills to learn and adapt quickly, make informative and objective decisions, and carry a positive and resourceful attitude. So I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here.
We thank you for your willingness to serve on the KGTF Board, and I'm sure, anybody?
Yeah, just want to congratulate. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say congratulations, April, for stepping up to the plate, and I acknowledge the fact that you are an alumni of Academy. Thank you very much, and I will say for the record that you've got my vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I apologize for having you sit this long, we should have done this at the beginning.
It was okay, it was very informative. It was a good experience.
It's better than PBS watching.
[laughing]
Okay, thank you very much, and the confirmation hearing of April Flores is deemed heard, and we'll have it on the next legislative session for confirmation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But thank you for waiting. Oh, no problem.
Did Chelsea stay?
No, I'm going to read it, she asked me to read her testimony.
All right, Bill 405.
Situs Massey, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on 405-32COR, as introduced by myself and getting bipartisan support from Senator Tony Adah. This is an act to amend sections 4108, C2 of Chapter 4, Title 4 of Guam Code Annotated, relative to sick leave. And if I may, this just provides that employees be given the opportunity to take care of, provide for healthcare for immediate family members and look at, they're required to exhaust their annual leave and compensatory time prior to utilizing their sick leave, and this just gives an opportunity for family members and employees to use sick leave to take care of a loved one. I did have Ms. Chelsea Brett, Mrs. Chelsea Brett, who was here to testify on the half of the bill, she did send a note saying that she couldn't wait, she had to go back to work. And if she, if I could just read the testimony, it says, "Hafaday, Senator, Vice Speaker BJ Cruz, Hafaday, I would like to voice my, voice publicly my support for Bill 405-32 relative to allowing employees of the government of Guam to use sick leave rather than annual leave when caring for immediate family members. Senator Munia Barnes, I am grateful to you for keeping parents and families in mind with this introduction. I, as the eldest grandchild, have always been the primary agent for my Okinawan grandmother. I make all her medical appointments and take her to them as well. I am her agent, her driver, and her translator for all things medical. I am also a mother of two boys ages eight and nine. Any parent will agree with me and attest to the fact that if you have one sick child, you will likely have a sick household at some point. Last month alone, I spent three days out of one week caring for one son and then spent three days of the following week caring for the other. During this time, I had to expend annual leave. Even with the Dr. Snow, I could not use my annual, my, my leave. I could only use my annual leave. I strongly believe that rather than hoarding the sick leave until I am of retiring age, I should be able to use this leave to care for my family. I value my annual leave because I use that time to spend with my children and husband during summer and Christmas breaks. My husband works as an educator, so he's on the same schedule as my children, and it is much harder for him to take time off to care for our kids. He is an excellent educator who is dedicated to his students. We make every effort to ensure he does not leave his students without a teacher. I admire that about him. Making this change to the legislation will not cost the government any extra money. All it will do is allow family members to use sick leave to care for this, for the sick and annual leave to be with their families. I hope this legislature will keep families in their minds and vote yes when they, when this bill makes it to the session floor. Signum Massey, Chelsea Brett."
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to testify on the bill? Otherwise, that's the only name I have on the list. Bill 405 is deemed heard. The other bill on the agenda is Bill 4009, introduced by Senator Dennis Rodriguez, and I'll read the sponsor statement. "Before 9-32 enact to provide a hazardous pay differential for employees of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center in unsafe or dangerous hazardous duty conditions. Seeks to address issues raised by numerous employees relative to fair, appropriate compensation for the working circumstances of certain employees, which is that personnel is referenced in the hazardous environmental pay policy and procedures. The Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center are often placed in personal jeopardy when working in what are deemed unsafe or dangerous hazardous duty work conditions in close proximity with mentally or emotionally disturbed or psychotic substance used disorder patients who are unpredictable, combative, or volatile. The issue of hazardous pay differential for GBHWC personnel is a matter of significant importance. In this regard, there is a persuasive argument in favor of the payment and hazardous pay for the personnel working in what I deem dangerous situations. This matter has remained contentious and unresolved for several years and needs to be brought to an equitable conclusion. The complexion of the matter, it is argued, is that the Civil Service Commission criteria do not coincide with historic GBHWC policy and practice of allowing hazardous pay from February 2000 to February 2012. The 12th-year president of their receiving this compensation for the hazardous circumstances they often work within speaks to the validity of their claims. At the very least, it definitely warrants further consideration. Bill 409 would provide for just that. A coordinated effort by the GBHWC and the Department of Administration in a thorough concerted review of the matter, it does not draw its own conclusion, but rather seeks to ensure bilateral and equitable resolution. The Director of the Guam Behavioral Wellness, Health and Wellness Center and the Director of the Department of Administration shall identify the direct exposure personnel and ensure all affected personnel receive the hazardous pay differential. The Department shall additionally develop a protocol for personnel not normally in direct exposure situations for those times when they are in unusual and dangerous direct contact situations, at which time they too shall be entitled to hazardous pay differential for that specific incident in which they are exposed." Situs Massey, Dennis G. Rodriguez, Jr., Senator, 32nd Guam Legislature. I believe, Mr. Vega, any other? Thank you for your patience, Mr. Vega. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, senators. The Honorable Benjamin F. J. Cruz, Vice Speaker of 32nd Guam Legislature and also Chairman of the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs. Good afternoon, sir, and members of this August body. Thank you very much for the invitation and allowing me this opportunity to present my views and position on the proposed Bill 409-32 as introduced by Senator Dennis Rodriguez. My name is Ray Vega, and I'm the Director of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, and I will be testifying in behalf of the Department. First and foremost, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Senator Dennis Rodriguez and Vice Speaker BJ Cruz for looking at the safety and welfare of the staff at Guam, Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. I would like to start my testimony this afternoon with the following statement. I would like to start my testimony this afternoon with the following statement. Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center serve individuals who suffer from mental illness, behavioral health issues, emotional disorders, and substance abuse addiction, among other clinical diagnoses. The fact that these are the people we serve, we cannot categorically say, and in general terms, say that they are unstable, unpredictable, combative, and violent. Individuals with mental illness and behavioral health issues per se are not considered violent, and only when there are occurring diagnoses, most significantly with substance abuse addiction, is when they become unpredictable, combative, and violent. There is no disagreement that in our workplace is deemed hazardous environment by the nature of the services and the client we serve. Violence against mental health workers are four times higher in comparable clinical services setting. But not all the time is the environmental disorders and unsafe for clients we serve are violent, are not violent at all. We provide a wide array of services, and a good number of our clients are integrated into the community. We see them around. Some are contributing members of our community we live in. My point is this: Only a portion of clients we serve can be categorized as unpredictable, combative, unstable, and violent. To address the issue of hazardous pay, and who would be entitled to, and what is deemed unsafe, and placement of my staff in personal jeopardy, and under what condition is not straightforward and easy. Taking care of forensic clients, meaning those that our courts ordered with heinous crime, and home visitations are probably good examples of, there is a high risk of unpredictable scenarios and exposures to a violent environment, and thus may warrant hazardous pay. Admission in inpatient facility for certain clinical condition, the severity of illness that requires them to be admitted, and the intensity of service that the staff provide may warrant hazardous pay depending on certain clinical diagnosis. On the other hand, we also see clients who do not pose any risk at all. They are among us. As the bill proposes, Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center will work with Department of Administration to come up with guidelines for the implementation of the hazardous environmental pay policy and procedure that is fair and consistent and can apply across the board without so much interpretation of, you're entitled this and you're entitled that. I am in support of this legislation, and I don't want to see it fail. Behind me are staff of Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center who, in one circumstance or another, have been exposed to a hazardous environment in the workplace. Although there is no mention of funding or appropriation, I am asking the Guam Legislature to allow us to work with the Department of Administration, and maybe in consultation with the Civil Service Commission, and move forward with establishment of guidelines and identify high-risk situations. Mental health workers and positions, and even non-mental health positions, because there would be an instance wherein, as the bill proposes, they may not be mental health, but there would be an instance wherein their services would be needed. So allow us to work with the Department of Administration and identify those positions that would warrant hazardous pay. And by this, as we develop the guidelines and protocol, we may be able to provide you also with a cost-benefit analysis, not cost-benefit analysis, but a cost analysis for the implementation and for the review of this legislature, and maybe codify that into public law. There's some typographical error there. Thank you for this opportunity to share my views with everyone.
Thank you very much. Did you wish to testify, ma'am?
Can, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
Senator, I was asked, you would notice that there's no Department of Administration here. If you would allow me, I would, I would read.
Yeah, I was going to read her testimony for the record too, but, but I'll let you read it, and then they can, you can explain to them why Department of Administration said what it did. I'll allow you to read it.
Okay, thank you.
Since that way, I'm not the bad person.
I was, I was just asking. Vice Speaker Benjamin J. F. Cruz, Chairman of the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs. He, Mina 30 dos Nali, just through Guahan, Suite 107, Hesler Street, Ganya Guam, 96910. Subject is Department of Administration's comment on Bill 409-32. Dear Vice Speaker Cruz, Buenas dias, Hafaday. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on Bill 409-32COR, which is an act to provide for a hazardous pay differential for employees of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center in unsafe or dangerous hazardous duty working conditions by adding a new subsection 86112 to Chapter 86, Title 10 of Guam Code Annotated. The Department of Administration respectfully wishes to express to the legislature that it supports the intent of the bill. However, it goes against the government of Guam hazardous pay policy that is applicable to all non-autonomous departments and agencies. The Department of Administration maintains that the hazardous duty pay policy for the government be followed for consistency purposes. This bill is deluded with established policy. If the bill should pass through, it is important that the DOA and Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center be given the authority to establish a policy to properly and fairly administer hazardous pay within the department. We recognize that there is no funding source identified for the implementation of this bill. Therefore, DOA recommends that our department, DOA, and Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center get together to establish the positions of the department that may be entitled to hazardous pay so that Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center can properly gauge the impact to its budget and properly request for funding from the legislature to fully implement any kind of salary increases. We thank you for the opportunity to express our comment on Bill 409-32COR, and hope that you consider them. Should you have any question, please contact Human Resources Division at 475-1132 or 1288. Danko Luna, Agresi Amento. Respectfully, Binita E. Monglonia, Director of Department of Administration."
Thank you very much. Ma'am, did you wish to testify? Provide testimony, please. Introduce yourself.
My name is Los Leones. I'm one of the nurses working at the department. In the 28 years that I've been employed at the department, I have been victimized many times and have also been assaulted. During the year 2005, that was September 15, when employees were still receiving our hazardous pay, I was physically assaulted by a patient with mental issue. As a result of this attack at that time, I underwent surgery and was out from work for approximately one year and eight months. I remember this incident very well because that when I worked, or I was realized that working in this kind of environment puts, puts my life in a serious danger. This kind of job is very unique. Even though it is our public duty to help the mentally ill, emotionally disturbed, and provide psychiatric services to these people with this illness, the lives of these employees such as myself comes with a price. That price is risking our personal lives so that we are able to help and provide assistance to these mentally ill people. Every day, our lives are placed in jeopardy, not knowing the sudden reactions of patients who we oversee. Not to mention the increasing crime rate in Guam today. These criminals end up being transferred to our department for help. This is not a regular 9 to 5 p.m. job. This is a 24-hour job. Employees work on a rotating shift 24 hours a day, seven days a week, because this patient's behavior is unpredictable. We receive an increase of patients intake daily. At all times, we have to be alert and on top of our job. If no one chooses to work in this kind of environment, who else will help and provide assistance to this mentally ill, emotionally disturbed people? I'm sure many and provide, oh, sorry. I'm sure many families have at least one family member or friend they know that has mentally ill condition. While some people fail to care for this mentally ill, they are left out in the streets, either causing crime to the island or left homeless. These are the kind of people we help, and it's very serious, placing our lives in jeopardy. As a loyal employee of the government for 28 years, the service that my colleagues and I choose to serve as a public duty to prevent and better the island's community, I believe the hazardous pay policy should be reinstated, reinstated, I'm sorry. The conditions of these people are different from those without mental condition. I must ask you to place yourself in our shoes. The experience I have dealt within the 28 years of working in the department is an unsafe working environment. It is these employees like myself at the Department of Mental Health and Wellness Center that sacrifice their lives, risking their lives, and placing their lives in jeopardy, always working around the clock with law enforcement, the OC officials, and other medical facilities to serve the public and provide relief and assistance to the people. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Was there anybody else who wished to be heard? Any other? If not, any, anybody have questions?
No questions, but can I just request, Mr. Chairman, because obviously there's a good number of individuals in the audience who are supportive of this measure, if they can just sign in and signify or identify that they support it, so that is part of the record?
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll circulate. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Senator, in fact, I encourage them, if they're shy, they could just get the one, one-piece document and then put there. Yes.
I just have a.
I have a couple of questions of Mr. Vega. Of course, the bill says that this will be, this act shall become immediately effective upon enactment. However, the Department of Administration has indicated that they will need time to basically form, put in place regulations and whatnot. So what is the department's expectation as to when this 10% pay differential will actually kick in? Immediately upon enactment, or after regulations actually get formulated and approved? So what was the expectation?
My, my expectation here, Senator, is that we are tasked to create the guideline and protocol for how to implement the hazardous pay. We already have identified the issues of, that are being raised, whether it's embedded in their job description, or it's already factored into the salary. So at least we have a common ground now to start what to look for, and identify certain scenarios, environment change, wherein it poses a different kind of unpredictable and challenging situation. So at least I'm quite confident that we already have identified the issues of what happened when this was questioned in 2008, and then Department of Administration rendered an opinion, and then it was also in consultation with the civil service. So the argument, the, not the argument, but the issue is whether or not the current job description, the pay of hazardous pay is embedded. So we have a starting point. So if, if the, when, when I look at it, I think what would drive the expectancy of the working with the department, with the Department of Administration is when the bill, when, when you, the legislature, would make it clear in the, in the language of the law, when, when, give us the timeline to start and look at it. That's how.
Okay. So if I understand correctly, then the mere enactment of this bill does not then start the 10% pay differential until after all the, you know, protocols are set in place and have actually, so that is one, that is the expectation.
That is my understanding, because they, as I said earlier, the client we serve, some of them are actually integrated into the community. So it's not, it's not, not that we're trying to label them unpredictable, violent, or whatnot, but that's, that's, that's where we are. We live with them. So, but there are certain instances wherein my staff are exposed to hazardous environment. A very good example is when they do home visitation and when they take care of forensic clients.
I understand, and I just want to make sure that, that, that there's not this, this expectation that once the governor signs this into law, that then there's the expectation that the 10% differential comes, and then now we're talking about back pay.
I, I think, I, I would rather leave it to the subject matter expert, which is the Department of Administration's pay classification to interpret that. I, I think I, I'm not probably in a position to.
Okay.
To guide you.
The second thing is, you, you did indicate that if you were to go through the job descriptions, in that job description, you could actually identify and list down for sure who are the ones that are coming to direct exposure with these clients versus, let's say, you know, people who, who are basically in the, who would not normally, who would not normally come into contact with the clients at the, at the clinic unless, unless for some reason he breaks loose and, you know, runs down to the admin office, which is, you know, should be a rarity.
Well, I think in that, in that, in that scenario, when the environment changes, I think they, they should, and it becomes hazardous, I mean, they're unpredictable, for sure. So when they, when, when they're getting direct contact with nurses for medication, and they become belligerent, and something triggered, a reaction happened, I think the guideline should be able to be, be able to come up in a guideline wherein that environment changes to a hazardous environment.
Okay.
That's, that's how I would be discussing that with the Department of Administration.
Okay, fine. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Vega, just one question, just based on the, it was noted that the hazardous pay practice was allowed from 2000 to 2012. Am I right?
That is correct, madam.
That's correct, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. The reason why I'm asking that is because the Department of Administration is asking that they work with you on this, and I was just going to ask the question, based on the last decade, what was the percentage of employees that were included in the hazardous pay? Was it 75%, 100% of the employees at Behavioral Health? Because if that's the case, you brought up nurses and what you, but I would think that one who does intake for, for a patient or a consumer would be just as, would, would just as qualify to the nurse that is, is giving the medication. So I, I want to ask, it shouldn't be hard, at least based in my mind, that if this practice was done, what was the percentage of the positions that were being utilized to, to account for hazardous pay? Was it all the employees of, of Behavioral Health? Was it just the nursing department, or the doctors, or the, what was it?
Senator, thank you. Senator, thank you. Based on the document since 2009 and based on the policies and procedure, the positions that were named or deemed eligible for hazardous pay at the time are the following: psychiatric nurses series, psych nurses administrator, psychiatric technicians, psychiatric social workers, psychiatric social worker administrators, physicians, and psychologists. So it's almost all of those that are providing direct patient care.
So based on the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, how many employees does that entail? Is it 75% of your office? How many employees does this?
200, we're about 200.
And if, and in that 200 employees?
My best guess, Senator, would probably be more, about 80%. But there, but there are other positions which is actually cited in the bill that
That should be included.
That should be included, not because they don't like security guard when they're called in to
Right.
To help in restraining and when they do apply the.
So all you would take is the 90% of the budget that you have and add the 10% would be that. You wouldn't have to work, so it's something that, Mr. Chair, that we probably could work into the bill, and that's why I wanted to ask for that. Because this program wasn't, wasn't just too long ago, several years ago, that this, the hazardous program was still implemented. It was just taken away a couple of years ago. Am I right?
Yes, February 2012.
Yeah. Which was a year, two, two years ago.
Two years ago, yes.
Yeah.
But if I understand correctly, the Civil Service Commission is of the opinion that these positions have hazardous pay embedded into it.
That is the, that is the issue. Yes.
Yes. I mean, it's sort of like the law enforcement. It's redundant to say they should get hazardous pay when we've given them the 40% increase because they are police officers. And so did the competitive wage increases that these individuals or these positions receive take into account the fact that they were working in hazardous conditions as opposed to, say, nurses at, I don't know, an elementary school or something? That they have a different, a different salary because they are nurses at Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness? I'd have to look at the difference in the position, I mean, the salary in the competitive wage to make sure that all nurses aren't listed as being the same, working in the ward, in the children's ward at Behavioral Wellness or working at an elementary school. Those nurses don't deal with the same kind of individuals. And so is there, is there a difference in salary already that takes into account their circumstances being in hazardous condition?
You know, I cannot answer that, Senator, but I think we are in, moving in the right direction wherein you're asking us, through the Department of Administration, to reevaluate and look at the critical task whether really the hazardous pay was really embedded in that one or it's just, just the adjustment in the.
It would seem to me that when we were, when they were doing the HAY study, that all of these positions should have listed the unique circumstances of their position so that the HAY consultants could say, this is not the same as a nurse at, again, I think, you know, at some elementary school as opposed to a nurse at Behavioral Wellness. And so did, did they fill in those questionnaires so that they showed that they were, they were dealing with a different clientele?
Senator, this is what I'll do. I'll repeat that same question to the Department, unfortunately, not here. So I would, I would ask them probably and then provide an answer to that.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, because there was a former colleague of ours who kept insisting that hazardous pay was, was duplicative because, I mean, the example he always used was the marshals of the court. You're hired to be a marshal of the court, you knew that you were dealing with prisoners, and so therefore, the amount of money that you're getting paid there is different from being a security guard at, you know, at someplace else, at the airport or something. So I'm just, I'm just wondering whether or not all of those things were addressed in the competitive wage.
I'm sorry.
Or not. Okay. We'll have to, we'll have to address those.
Okay.
Any other question? Thank you. Bill 409 is deemed heard.
Thank you.
The, before adjourned, the committee will be accepting testimony for the next 10 days, and it can be sent to Senator at senatorsbjcruz.com, delivered to 155 Hessler, to the mailroom, and it'll be delivered to our office. Or you, Hagana, I'm sorry. And, or you can fax it to us at 477-2522. Okay? Thank you very much. The hearing is deemed adjourned.